Okay, I think I'm gonna call tonight's meeting to order. Seven o'clock. So, I'll just start by making our usual comment that the meeting is being recorded. In fact, it's being videotaped. And that you're also welcome to make your own recording, but if so, let us know just so that we ensure that you aren't gonna disrupt the meeting with your setup. Okay. So, tonight, we have one agenda item that's a scheduled item and then a bunch of other committee business, but I'm just gonna start off with that item, which is the recommendation to the zoning Board of Appeals, which is for the application of the Concord Free Public Library for a special permit and site plan review under various sections of our zoning bylaw for the partial demolition of the existing house, construction of a new addition, interior renovations, new accessible pedestrian entrance and site improvements at their property at 129 and 151 Main Street. So, do we have a representative of the applicant to speak?
Brief introduction, I'm Paul Adams, a trustee with the Concord Free Public Library. And with me tonight is Kerry Cronin, the director of the library, and Chris from our civil engineer from GGB, and Stu and Michael from Johnson Roberts, our architects.
Okay.
So, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. We're really quite excited about this, and I guess I'll just offer a little bit of background that we've been looking at this project for four or five years. We're very fortunate to be able to purchase the adjacent property and then spent about two years having meetings with the community and asking patrons, what doesn't work well at the library, what would you like to see improved? And the organization of the project, in addition to the library, connecting these two buildings is a direct outcome of that feedback. So, we're looking forward to presenting tonight. I'll turn it over to Chris.
Okay.
I can just use this?
Nope, you can. You can...
You can do either.
This? Well, so it's being videotaped, so projector will be easier if you wanna use that.
Yeah.
That's the little silver button. By the way. There you go.
Again, Christopher Garcia with Garcia-Galasca de Souza with civil engineers for the project. I don't know if we can... The... This is the site survey of the project, of the site. The existing library building located here, and then the existing residence. The existing residence has a gravel drive. There's also an adjacent gravel drive for the library here on site. There's no other permanent parking on the site of the library. There's pathways to the building here. There's a mechanical enclosure for mechanical area with existing mechanical equipment located in that area. As mentioned, the buildings are served by water, sewer, natural gas, electrical, and some existing stormwater leaching pits that serve the library. Let's see if we can go to the next drawing. These are just detail sheets of the project right here. This is the site demolition plan. As this gray hatch area, these are the two existing gravel drives that will be removed. Also, the existing walkways into the residence will be removed. The darker hatch are the portions of the building that is proposed to be removed at the residence. There's a garage area here, a small shed building, and this is the portion of the existing structure that will be demolished. Utilities, we intend to...
Sorry.
There's an existing sewer service that will be removed that leads to Main Street. That will be replaced as part of this project once the renovations and additions are constructed.
I assume that the demolition delay by law would not be invoked by this kind of process?
No, because they're not demolishing the structure.
I just wondered about that standalone garage. I assume it's... Nah?
I...
Okay.
I don't, I think it was built after 1941, so it's in check.
This is...
This is not the right line, is it?
Actually, an older plan, so I don't know if I can...
Why do you move the easel?
Put the easel...
So, yeah, one, oh, there we go.
So, this is the proposed site plan, layout plan. It's added a larger scale than what you had seen on the site survey. So, this is just the corner of the existing library building that's existing to remain. This white area is the existing portion of the residence that will remain. This hatched area is the building addition that will adjoin the existing library to the new residence. And shown is going to be pathways and walkways to the building. This is the accessible walkway. There'll be a maintained new dust, stone dust path in that area. And then new walkways in the back. These are all hard surface walkways, patio area. These, this will connect to the existing path next to that existing mechanical area for the library. And then there will be a small mechanical area here that will house condensing units for the HVAC air conditioning system. That is, will be similar construction as what is at the existing library, slightly depressed area to shield the units. There'll be an acoustical fence around this enclosure to shield the noise made from those condensing units. Typical fan units that you would see kind of in a residential application, just a little bit more robust to deal with the air conditioning systems. So, as part of the accessibility upgrades, we intend to create two accessible parallel parking spots on Main Street. So, we've realigned the curves slightly to come in to the south to allow for parallel parking and then allowing for an accessible striped area, you know, obviously to get, allow the passengers to get out of the vehicles. The northern edge of that striped area aligns with the outer edge of the existing parking striping area there for the parallel parking that's already on Main Street. So, this allows for an accessible path to the existing building. I'm sorry, to the new addition. This is an accessible path. This is not an accessible path because that's an existing step up into the library building, so that's not an accessible path. So, again, it's realignment of the curb, the granite curb that goes back in, and a slight realignment of that existing concrete walkway to allow for parking. In terms of utilities, one of the main major utilities that we need to, or one of new utilities is electrical. I'm sorry, I did not point that out on the existing survey, but the transformer is located in this area and it's actually fed from Main Street. So, that electrical service will be redone and actually come from Sudbury, which is shown in this part plan, which is the south corner of the site. If you could see, this is that existing corner of the library building there. So, it's just a part plan due to the scale. So, that transformer is gonna be located down in Sudbury, near Sudbury, and a new service will be brought in to the building for electrical power. As I mentioned, there'll be a new, we relay the sanitary service for the residence, renovated residence, that'll be a new sanitary line. Existing fire and water services are going to remain. We're going, the existing library is protected with an automatic sprinkler system that's going to be extended through our connecting addition to feed sprinklers in the residence and the addition. And then we also have some planned storm drainage, again, because we have limited area. There'll be subsurface structures below ground that will collect all of the roof runoff and surrounding areas. We have a series of catch basins or drain inlets that are going to collect the water from ground and also from the roof and direct that to two areas that'll infiltrate the stormwater into the ground. Similar approach that we had done in the past years for the original library construction. We sent that information. Hopefully, you received that drainage report. I know town engineering is gonna be reviewing that. That was part of the review comments. And then there would be some site lighting just at the sidewalks. That would be ballad, kind of ballad style lighting. There's no parking on site, so we don't have any high lighting poles, so the threat of light passing over the property line is not, not present in this design.
Will there be lights along where the accessible parking is?
The lighting will start essentially at the sidewalk.
Okay.
Here, that sidewalk intersection, and then new lights within the property here on the sidewalk, and then on the rear in that patio area that...
Right, and there's street lamps along the road.
Yes, those would be existing to remain. So, essentially, the site utility plan. So, basically, the existing impervious cover is approximately 28,500 square feet. Due to the new addition and the proposed improvements on site, we are going to increase the impervious cover to just under 35,000 square feet. So, there's approximately about 6,000 square foot increase in pervious cover, but we're providing the new drainage to deal with that increased impervious cover to infiltrate the stormwater into the ground. In terms of all setbacks, we're meeting all setbacks with a new addition. The existing porch is 16 and a half feet setback to the property line. That's an existing condition that we don't, you know, perform that's existing to remain. Other than that, we meet all the setbacks. We meet the cover and the area calculations that are required for the project.
Do you want to go to landscaping?
Sure, yeah. So, our landscape architect is on vacation this week, so we'll speak to this the best we can. So, out here in the front, there's an existing big yellow wood tree. We're keeping that, and then we're gonna infill some plantings along the perimeter of the existing building down low under that. Have a new lawn here that will kind of be in a similar range to the lawn that's at the Sudbury Road entrance to the library. And there's gonna be some new trees that will go up around that as well as some low plantings. Again, there's gonna be some plantings over here, and then we are adding to, there are some tree, existing trees along, this is, this is a little confusing, it's flipped.
Right, from the previous one, yeah.
This is up itself here, so...
Just, where's Main Street? Can you just...
Oh, sorry, Main Street is down here.
Down, oh, that's my, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah. So, Main Street's down here. This is north, and the south side is up here. So, along the western property line here, we are keeping some trees. We're taking some down for fire access and then some trees that are too close to the building, and then we're infilling some new trees to provide a screening planting buffer. We're doing a similar thing in this back corner, along the back, the north, excuse me, the south property line, where we're keeping a large number of the existing trees and infilling with new trees as a planting buffer. And that's, that's the line short of the landscape plan. If there's any questions about it.
Well, I just wondered, I mean, what are you taking down? You said that there are few trees that are too close to the house, but I mean, anything significant?
No, there's, there are a few, there's a relatively large tree back here, but...
You want the demo plan?
Oh, sorry.
Well, the, I think you're...
Oh, it's, it's listed on there.
Yeah, if you go back, yeah, to...
Yeah, it's on the demo.
Yeah, the demo plan, you can see, yeah, right here is great, thanks. So, this, this is showing there's a number of trees in this area, which are mostly, lots of their...
White pines.
Yeah, white pines, yeah. So, those are really clustered together and very close to the house and impeding on fire access, and they're just not in great shape. So, many of these ones over here, I believe, are mostly white pines and are...
And some spruce.
Yeah, and are, again, very close to the house. And then there's a Norway maple here, so an invasive species.
Yeah.
So, it's mostly that sort of thing. There's not anything that, that is really a, a tree that's in good shape that we're, we're taking down. And we're being careful, you know, in this area, and again, further down to the south to maintain on the trees that we would raise, except we can't on the property lines.
Okay, thanks.
I don't know if you wanna get back to the landscape planner, if there was any answer I wanted to touch on there?
I think that was it for the landscape. Yeah, I mean, unless there's something more you wanted to present?
No, I think that, that's just for the end.
I mean, is there a list of species?
There are, yeah, so if, sorry.
Sure, so it's right there, I guess, yeah.
It's hard to read here, but this is the species list, and then they're all tagged...
Okay, great.
In the landscape.
We'll, we'll do that. All right, thanks.
Thanks.
Are we gonna see any elevations?
Oh, yeah, I think, sorry, actually, I'm gonna keep going down.
Be helpful if somebody addresses the relief for parking? Did you wanna run through the floor plan real quick?
Sure, we can do, yeah, whatever, yeah. We're happy to go through it, yeah. This, this is just showing, this is really an interior lighting plan, but we're just showing, there's a few, sorry, there's a few exterior lights at the entrance there. So, that's why we've included this, that they don't show up on the site lighting plan. And again, those are low. The only one that's, that's gonna be an overhead light is at the existing porch of the house. The rest are gonna be low sort of step lights. So, this is the basement plan, the existing library in this area, the existing house in this area. We're not doing a whole lot at the basement level, except that we're, you know, redoing a few things in the special collections area. This could be a little bit of basement storage, and we're looking now into possibly doing an expansion of the vault, the archive vault that's in the special collections as well as the workroom. And then this is that sunken area that Chris mentioned, where the mechanical equipment will go out on the rear side. And then the rest of it, yes, is all unexcavated in this area. At the upper, this is the ground floor, so this is the Sudbury Road entrance. This is the entrance if you're coming from the village. And we're taking, right now, this is the, the children's library office that's gonna come out so that we can create a connection through here. The existing children's library will become a forum, so a large meeting room, which is something the library lacks now. This will connect from the, the opening from the existing library building will connect into an area. It's a common, so it's gonna have the periodicals, some gathering space, they have copy, and then we've gotta navigate the, change in elevation from about four feet eight above the, of the floor here at this ground level. It's about four foot eight above the ground level of the house. So, we will ramp the ramps around as well as some stairs and seating that will bring you down to, this is the, the new children's apartment, an activity room, toilets and office for the children's apartment. And then, again, from this area at the bottom of the stairs and the ramp, you can come down this walkway here. This is the entrance that will lead from Main Street. So, Main Street's down here. We'll come along a new hallway, and then this is when you're in the existing house. There's a workshop, sort of a maker space, media lab, and these are spaces that are all tied along the back. And then this is, we're back into the children's, going back here, a few additional toilets.
So, architecturally, I mean, I, the old house will sort of read as a facade, and yet the entrance is back along the back. How are you dealing with that from a design point of view to kind of give people cues as to how they're gonna enter this building?
Yeah, so maybe we can go to the elevation. So, I think part of it will be, one thing is that we're taking off the walkway to the existing house to help...
Sure, but, but I mean, it's still gonna, you're gonna retain the facade of the house.
Yeah, we will, yes, yeah. So, you'll have, so if you don't mind scrolling back up a little, so this will be the entrance. It will be set back. It's a little, makes it a little easier to read, and we can send a rendering if that's helpful ahead of the meeting.
We have one.
Yeah.
But this... Does that have a... Oh, yeah, yeah.
There we go, yeah.
That is much better than the old... Yeah.
No, I was just surprised it wouldn't interpell that or... Okay. Yeah, it still feels like a house here.
Well, yeah, that's what we're hoping for.
Well, and it needs to, it needs to, but then you can't enter it.
That's actually important. While we noted that on 151, there are a couple of other doors. They're not public entrances, so the emergency degress, only sort of front door is effectively locked at the building, although it's, it's a fire...
Yeah.
...rest, as well as an exit that's staircase'd on the west side of the building. So, the only public entrance that's being added is the accessible entrance at the north side.
Right, it just seems a little weird.
Yeah, well, the goal of the project was to maintain the identity of the two buildings.
Right.
1790 Hayward Benjamin House, a 1934 brick building, designed by Harry Rowan. So, we think that does that.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to make down by the entrance while obviously making it visible, so that's, that's the goal, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's part of the reason why, you know, this, this door is gonna be fixed shut and will have no steps, or excuse me, no walkway to it. This door will also have no walkway to it. This one, which is an accessible means of degress, will have that stone dust path out to the street, and the thinking there being that with the stone dust, you know, implies that it's not really a main entrance.
Right, I just, whenever I've seen sort of a setback modern entrance that's superimposed on somewhat historic structures, you know, to draw people to it, typically there's kind of like a plaza or some other external feature that kind of says, this is it, this is where you come in, you know, or something.
Yeah, well, we're hoping, we're hoping the walkway and the lawn with some seating around it will, will draw people in to that entrance as opposed to trying to get into the house.
And then, I, I don't know, maybe this is a little bit out of order, but I had heard in the Chairs Breakfast that there apparently was still some feedback to be incorporated from the HDC. I mean, I guess you're meeting with them next at August 1st, but is there a risk that this design's gonna be changed significantly?
Well, we, we had had a meeting scheduled this past week, and then the meeting ended up being canceled, so that's why we're, before you're a little out of order, but the, the intention is that we will, you know, come back once we have the certificate of appropriateness.
Yeah.
So...
It's just, it sounded like to me, at least in the Chairs Breakfast, that it wasn't gonna be just a rubber stamp. It might, there might be, there are some open issues or something.
Sure, so one of them, a number of the issues are things that from the last meeting was that we're addressing, for instance, we had had some different landscape areas with more impervious surfaces and we've gone back and...
So, this plan reflects the proposed changes?
Exactly, this is...
Okay, good.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
Because that was my big concern about tonight, is like, well, were we looking at, you know, what was likely to get built or not?
No, yeah, this, this reflects what we have submitted to the HAC for the next meeting. I don't, if you wanna go back to the, I think the only thing we didn't touch on was the, before we come back here, was the upper, the second floor and the, and the roof plan, which if you wanna just go through that. I'm sorry, I did, yeah, this is the second floor, we can just stay. Okay, thanks. So, this is, this is the second floor of the house. This is the second floor of the library, which is setting a couple of study rooms. Up here at the library, there's not a whole lot that's going on here other than some collection. Stuff is moving around.
So, what used to be the magazine reading room, what is that hap, happening to that now?
So, that's gonna be the, the books that are currently stored, housed up here in the atrium.
Oh, the forbidden section.
Exactly. Will be, will be made accessible to the public by being moved to this area, and I think we're gonna add some large print and some other...
Especially great that it's like religion books.
Yeah, and self-help. So, we're gonna make, the intended is to make that more, certainly more accessible to everybody in the public, and that some of the, of the original collections that are stored in the basement will now be moving out.
Oh, good, I was gonna wonder if you were gonna buy books by the foot or something.
Yeah, yeah. This is one of the stories. No, it'll be, so it'll be a nice ability to, you know, house and, and display the original collections.
Great, great.
In a way that they're still protected.
It's magnificent, so it absolutely has to, yeah.
And then the, the upper level of the house, this is almost entirely existing piece of the house. There's a little bit that's open to below here that's under the bridge, and the staircase is new, but this is for the most part going to be offices that are currently housed in the lower level of the library building, as well as a few study rooms. And that's, and this is a, there's a courtyard now in the house that's gonna become one of the workshop maker space rooms, so this will be a double height space for that to get some bar of light, these second floor spaces.
So, this back is a kind of an atrium area, I mean, that this...
Sorry.
So, where the children's section is, is an extra height?
There's one area, this is, sorry, if you don't mind going back to the...
No, what do you mean?
You go back one page.
Just trying to see if there's any kind of interior perspective, chairs would...
Sorry.
Yeah.
It's this area here, in the children's area, and basically, it's, we're extending the, the roof line of this piece of, this out of the house...
Yeah.
...back, and so that's gonna end up having a, a double height space there. It's not gonna be completely double height because the, the floors of the house are, you know, a lot lower than what we'd have for a commercial structure, but it'll be a bit of a raised area there, and similarly over this workshop.
Okay. So, is there a rendering from the other side? This is the closest thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The renderings submitted?
Uh, they're submitted for the storage base here.
Okay, so they want submitted to the CBA?
No, but it, I don't know if it's possible to bring them up, or...
Are they on the...
They should, yeah, they're the ones that'll be sent over for the last meeting.
What's the total increase in gross square footage?
The total increase, I'll see, I don't have it off my head, but...
Or, or even percentage wise, I'm just...
Yeah, let me just grab the number. So, we are going from... We're adding, once you subtract the, the portion of the houses to be demolished, it's about 6,500 square feet net increases.
And the existing library is about...
58,000. Oh, I'm sorry, the, the existing is 51,500, and we're going to 58,000 for the combined buildings.
Got it, thanks.
Even with the footprint of the existing house, you're only adding six, or...
Yeah, well, we're taking...
Eight, seven thousand square feet.
There's a decent amount of...
Tracture, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, more recent additions on the backside of the...
Gosh, it feels like a much bigger addition.
It does, it does.
Yeah.
Is that quite right?
Could it be? It's just, it looks, looks bigger than that, but, you know...
Hey, I think once you look at what the...
Well, I'm just looking at the, isn't this all a building?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if you look at the, the footprint that's coming on...
So, I'm, I'm just gonna interrupt. We need one person talking at a time, and the board gets to talk first.
So, it's one story though in the back, maybe that's part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's what's affecting this. I'm thinking like volumetrically, you know, the whole, because if you look at the footprint of the building, the footprint is extending quite a bit, right? In fact, I think you were talking about the impervious surface area increases almost as much as your square footage increase.
Yeah, so...
You know, pretty much, which is kind of surprising. That's very rare.
Yeah, well, yeah, when we don't, when the, the, you know, there's no parking, we'll get to, so that obviously takes off a lot of the impervious surface, but if you, if you go to the next slide, I wonder if it shows the outline of the existing underneath.
Nope.
Unfortunately, it doesn't, but...
There's one.
There was one that, yeah, right here. This shows the old footprint superimposed. There was one that, yeah, right here. This shows the old footprint superimposed, yeah. Um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There, yeah.
So you can see what we're talking about adding is, you know, really this area in here, you know, a little over here as well.
Right. And then that garage is outside of the footprint, so it's actually total subtract traction.
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
Did you say that you made a change to, um, accommodate the HDC that resulted in less impervious surface?
We did, yes.
And what, can you just say what that change was?
So we had, had, uh, space out here for three, um, accessible parking spaces and van parking, um, and, and obviously driveway to get to those. So taking that out, um, I don't have the numbers in front of it, but that was the, the biggest part of our.
No, that's okay. And it's, it's being replaced with landscaping?
Correct.
Nice.
Okay.
And then I don't know if we want to go back to the elevations, if there was anything else to.
Maybe, maybe when we've got one of the plan, um, views. Uh, so this, this area looks like it's generally sort of in the style of this house with a couple of glass sections in between, sorry?
That's correct.
So not a lot of windows along that wall?
Uh, correct. We're, if we want to go to the, um, elevation, we might have a rendering looking down that side as well. These, um, these are.
Don't have a rendering though.
Just resales.
Let's give us this, let's.
Yes. Th- these are a little, these renderings are a little older, but this is largely unchanged other than the, um, paint color. Uh, so we have these windows, this isn't showing the, the recessed windows.
There's a window there and there.
Correct.
And then, so, and then on the back curb, that's all glass. Do you have a sense of the, the programming? I'm, I'm just wondering about light activity in the evenings, neighbors, uh, for that back wall of class?
Thank you for that question. Um, and that's come up with the HDC as well. We just scrolled past a night vision. So the Library Corporation is committed on the south and the west and the north side to install screens that are light blocking screens, effectively ninety-three percent of the light submitted will go down on timers at dusk um, during the, during the evenings to control light emission towards the adjacent areas. There are two properties on Suburban Road and a couple on Academy Landing on the west side of the property. And, um, the discussion has been to have shades that automatically go down in the evening.
Okay. And, and from that, do you have, do you know the distance from those windows to the adjac- adjacent, the house that's behind there?
Uh, I don't know the exact number. If we want to go to the, um, any of the segments we can look at, but we're, yeah, so these windows are obviously all along here. Um, so they, the setback, I don't know if this is gonna show us the setback, but the, we get the thirty, um, thank you. So this closest point is, you know, a little more than thirty feet.
Okay.
To the property line. Uh, these windows are mostly, uh, shielded from this side. Uh, obviously, you know, from this side, they're, they're visible. They're mostly shielded by, yeah, this, this portion of the wall.
I, I will point out the actual required setback is fifteen feet as a corner lot.
Okay.
So not, not thirty feet.
Okay. And it looks eyeballing it. I guess it's fifty to sixty feet to the corner of that, that adjacent house. I'm just looking at the G I C.
Any other discussion by the board at this stage? Yeah, so let's get yours.
One more item, and I am not a traffic consultant, I'll just preface that, but there was a traffic consultant on board. Uh, as part of the application, we are asking for relief for onsite parking.
Yeah.
Um, I think, um, the existing library as it is would require a hundred and sixty-eight parking spaces. The added area, um, requires an additional sixty-four parking spaces. Uh, but the traffic consultant, I believe this memo had been issued to the board, um, had studied that and, and there's adequate, uh, parking, public parking, you know, within a five minute block, uh, to the facilities. So that's why we're asking for relief. We're not asking for relief because we think the code by law isn't correct, but, um, just due to the fact that we have no, um, you know, onsite, um, parking area involved, but according to the study, there's adequate public parking, uh, within facilities as well.
Yeah, now, when we reviewed the Emerson extensions that just went up, um, you know, there's the shared parking lot and I think there's a shared parking agreement around that lot and there've been discussions about reconfiguring the lot. Um, there also, I assume you're gonna have more evening programming here with the, the big space that you've got in the meeting space and so i- it seems like there's more potential for conflicts. I just wondered, what are the, you know, have, have you had any discussions with the umbrella? What, what's, you know, what's the status of kind of the parking agreement? Any revisions in, in the parking lot there? What was being done with all that?
I, I can offer a response to that.
Okay.
Uh, we have had a meeting with town planner and, uh, town manager for shared, for MOU on the municipal parking lot.
Yeah.
Indicating that we'll have a shared calendar. And we've actually already had that in place. So there haven't been any conflicts over the last few years with the increased activities of both the Umbrella and Concord Academy and the library, because there is a good level of communication. But we're ratifying that, confirming it with an electronic calendar. It's interesting though that this change to the library will allow more afternoon programs. Now, the only programs that we can have at the library, a lecture or a book reading, or a, a group over twenty-five people, has to be in the evening when the library is closed. But the change from the existing children's room into a public meeting space allows more of those activities to take place during the day. So folks from the Council of Aging are, they're excited about that opportunity, being able to have opportunities in the afternoon. But we'll maintain and continue the diligence of communicating with Concord Academy and the Emerson Umbrella to avoid any head-on conflicts. There's also shared opportunities and we do have the evening event. Concord Academy is very gracious and with advance notice of allowing us to park in their spaces as well as the municipal lot.
Okay. Um, and then the handicap parking provisions? I mean, I, I assume you have to provide, you know, normally a number of these handicap spots you're providing to, how does that function in the case of this design?
The, the.
Municipal lot will provide the.
It's already a legal non-conforming site because they don't provide parking.
Right.
Um, so it, this, what they're proposing is actually improves that situation.
Right.
Um, I believe the requirement, it has to be within, um, a certain distance, um, what I don't know off the top of my head and Jeff might know, but I think it's like three hundred feet, three hundred feet from the entrance, there has to be some accessible parking, which the library is already accommodated from the handicap parking in the municipal lot. Um, but providing these two additional spaces will actually improve.
Yeah, I was just wondering that like for the number of square feet that they're adding, what would be the normal number of handicap spots that would be required?
For two hundred and thirty-two parking spaces? I don't know.
No, no. Well, I mean, not for the two hundred and thirty-three total, but for the sixty-four additional, right? How many of those would have to be? See, that's what I just.
I don't, I don't, there's, there's four handicapped parking spaces, um, in the municipal lot that face the library already. Um, and then they're adding these two.
Right. So it's six.
Yeah, I have a dumb question. But we've got an increase in space that I think we just calculated was about fifteen percent. It was what, fifty-two hundred or?
Uh, an additional sixty-five hundred on fifty-one thousand five hundred.
Okay, so maybe fifteen percent. I'm not a.
Yeah.
I'm not a numbers guy, but what, the parking spaces are jumping by forty percent to requirement. How does that calculation work? I'm surprised that they.
Because square, a square footage for a residential dwelling doesn't, you can have, um, a house in town that's ten thousand square feet. You're only required to have two parking spaces.
Right, but if, if they need a hundred and sixty-eight spaces for fifty-one hun- fifty-one that thousand square, square feet? And they're adding six thousand?
No, so, but, so they're, they're adding, they're, they're adding significant more space to the library. We're talking about total impervious coverage and total square footage by removing what they're demoing for a residential structure. So part, part, parking, parking doesn't, parking is not the same for a residential structure as it is for the library. So for, for parking, it's just based on square footage.
Yeah, I'm not netting out the, what would be allowed or required by the, the, I guess, so is this, is the six thousand additional square feet not including the, the square footage of the house?
Um, I'm, sorry, I might be able to speak.
Go ahead, yeah, please.
So, um, so the fifty-one thousand five hundred is the existing library building and the existing house? The existing library building on its own, sorry.
Oh, so this explains the whole thing.
So the existing library building on its own is forty-two thousand, give or take, about forty-two thousand square feet. And then the remainder of that fifty-one five hundred is the house.
Okay.
Okay, that was a detail I was.
That's a, that makes a big difference now. Okay, so that's what had confused us. All right.
Add a little bit to the discussion on the handicaps, but I met with the building inspector and the actual analysis, given that it's non-conforming space on additional accessible spaces required, is a very difficult one to calculate.
Mm-hmm.
However, in our conversations with the community before we developed these plans, we had, we heard numerous times from folks that the library is actually quite difficult to access right now.
Yes.
If you're in a situation where you're in a wheelchair or on crutches or in a walker.
Absolutely.
The challenge is to park on Suburban Road, cross busy Suburban Road and walk up a long ramp. It meets code, but it's difficult.
Right.
So one of the primary, primary goals for this project has been to improve accessibility for the entire community. And we think this, um, walkway with two parking spaces adjacent to the north side is a significant enhancement. It actually also technically adds one more space, um, to the parking in downtown for what it's worth, because there are no spaces where the two blocks are. I guess you could make the argument that that's two spaces. Um, but one, the handicap space on the opposite side of the main street will be converted to a standard space. And there will be now two on the library side. Can you correct the numbers?
Correct.
Will the, will the ones on the, uh, main street side, will they be van accessible or would they just be?
Yes, that's, was the pullout requirement.
Okay, well, that's, that's very good. I mean, I'm looking now at the ADA requirement, you know, for, I mean, if you count the, there's four in the municipal lot, right? But you're gonna convert one of them?
No, municipal lot won't.
Okay, the municipal lot has four and then, you know, two out there, you've got six and, you know, that's for like two hundred parking spaces, six would be the requirement, so.
And I believe with the improvements that the town will be making to the municipal lot, they're actually, um, I believe there's at least one more handicap space being added towards the umbrella.
Great.
In that lot.
Yeah. So I think that, I mean, it's, it's looks in the realm is what I, I just was trying to understand what you're proposing. Okay. So we've got engineering, landscape, architecture, parking. Anything else we should be looking at at this stage? I mean, I was wondering, for example, did Public Works, have they reviewed the parking plan? Uh, I mean, the, the curb cut clearly, you're, I mean, you're changing the curb configuration out there. They've looked at that. Uh, it seemed like there's still pending comments back from the engineering department. I mean, there are a number of things we don't have yet, so.
So we're, um, uh, engineering will need to review, um, the stormwater drainage, but, um, given that we're, we're talking, it's, it's only, um, roof, basically roof recharge and some minor pavement. Um, they'll review the calculations, just make sure everything's sized appropriately. The building commissioner did not have time to review these plans, um, although he did review the previous plans and there were no significant issues or concerns raised. This will be going to the HDC next Thursday, is that right? Thursday, August first. Um, but based on my conversations with, um, my senior planner, um, many of the issues and concerns that were previously raised, um, have been addressed in the revised set of plans. Um, the, I, the curb cut, um, I had conversations with the public works director. Um, there were no, you know, significant issues and concerns, but um, the actual change will, um, this change, um, I believe will require, uh, some input from the select board and then appropriate permits from, um, the engineering division to make actual construction detailed drawings, make sure that the drainage along the road.
Yeah.
Um, you know, flows in the right direction, um, you know, whether they may have to add a, you know, a additional catch base and those will be minor details um, to the actual physical design. Um, and then I think.
Well, that construction sequencing plan. So we got really nice ones from, uh, I have to say, we got really good ones from Concord Academy and, and a good one from, uh, the Umbrella for their projects. So you've got competition out there.
Well, not really. So we're using the same group.
Okay.
And Concord Academy, and C E Boyd is the builder.
Yeah.
Who developed those plans for both the Umbrella and C A. And it could be for us, we're currently working with them on that plan. And Concord Academy has graciously allowed us to use the temporary parking.
Oh, that they put in, which was a very nice setup.
Might have been the only way we could do this. So they, they have offered that opportunity for us during this project and then they'll restore that as soon as the library project is.
Okay.
So what, what you will likely see should this board move forward with any type of, um, positive recommendation, that there will be a condition, um, somewhat requiring that, um, there be some acknowledgement from Concord Academy regarding the use of that, uh, because from a construction standpoint, um, the Umbrella had the same conditions, Concord Academy has had the same conditions, um, that there'd be no construction worker um, parking on Main Street or in the municipal lot.
Yeah.
Um, it either has to be accommodated onsite or elsewhere, um, which accommodating onsite will be difficult alone um, with the staging of equipment, the construction trailer.
Yeah.
And all of those items. So, um, I, that will be, that is a standard condition regarding the construction sequencing and safety plan. Um, especially similar to Concord Academy and the Umbrella, the safety plan will be, um, a component that town staff will look at.
Right.
Very critically.
Last small question. Um, you talked before about there being able to, in this, in the, uh, in that area, that being able to get a cup of coffee. And it's, and there was, uh, there was language in here about the health division.
Oh, yeah.
Concerns about using the kitchen for visitors, serving, service.
I can offer a quick response to that. We, it was encouraged that we, um, review the agreement that was developed for a similar space at the museum edition. And we have a draft of that language indicating that no food will be prepared on site, that it's only to serve food that's been brought in offsite. So we need to complete that memo and submit it to the Board of Health, which we'll do very soon.
And, and my cons- my concern isn't so much about the Board of Health's purview on, on determining that. But I'm wondering about trash and, and removal of trash. So if, once you bring food onto site, you, you've got a different trash situation. This talks about there being totes for trash and recycling. I'm presuming the library's primarily, you know, recyclables and coming out of there now. Is there any planning in changing how the library addresses trash if you're providing food service?
That's a good question that we should look into. However, we have periodic events that are catered. Um, where catering service brings in, to the best of my knowledge, for all intents and purposes, leftover food and removed from site. But I think it's a good point that we should address in that memo to the Board of Health. On the outside chance, we, we don't want food stuff filling up trash barrels and left adjacent to forty-six Suburban Road.
Yeah, I mean, these issues, they get hot, you know, we dealt with this in very fine detail with the, with the.
Yeah.
Recent.
Cafe near.
Cafe. And, and it, because you're just adjac- immediately adjacent to residential areas, of course, they're putting out trash, but it could be of a different magnitude.
I think it is. It's all day, every day in their case.
But, but I, I, I will clarify that, you know, the, the Concord Museum went down one path, um, and then, um, during the discussions with the Board of Health after they received their special permit, um, had to go a, a different path. So, um, it's my understanding that if, you know, a caterer comes in and, you know, uses that kitchen to plate food, pull out the cheese crackers, plate the fruit and serves it, that you need a food service permit at that point. And the health code requires. that you need a food service permit at that point, and the health code requires, you know, a, a hand, dedicated hand wash sink, it requires a steel countertop, it, there are certain requirements, um, so, just because, you know, the, the preparation of food is not the trigger, it's, you know, there's different requirements, so, I think between now, um, and, you know, should this be continued, you know, for the board, um, to re, review some type of recommendation, they need to sit down with the health director and, um, and understand the food code requirements, um, because it, it, it makes a difference. Um, finishing up with my comments from the report, one of those comments was where, you know, currently the plans don't show where all the trash totes are to be located, and, um, if this area down on this side is now gonna be, you know, a public plaza, and people can walk through to this entrance, are all the totes, currently they're all lined up, you know, back here, um, you know, where, where are the totes gonna be stored? Are they gonna be stored inside this fenced-in area? Um, there, there is some, you know, food waste, I mean, there, there's currently a small employee, you know, kitchen, and employees do, you know, have some food, so, I, I'm lo, I'm less concerned with, you know, just, um, you know, one or two events, you know, every few months, compared to, you know, as your example, Cafe Nero, which is, you know, every day.
Yeah.
Is, now, I'm trying to recall the discussion from town meeting, is there a change in the staffing levels as a consequence of this, um, addition being put in?
We have our library director here, so I'm gonna let Karen judge.
We are anticipating a conditional positions to, to meet the, so we have a safe area of staff, children's room is required, but further from the, the current new libraries, and we are anticipating having two staff members in that space at all times, um, and then we'll have new maker space, and we are envisioning a position to oversee that new service as well.
Because I think, you know, when we looked at parking relief in the past, uh, you know, again, I'm thinking of the example of Cafe Nero, um, one, we, we treated the parking requirements for staff differently than we did for patrons, essentially, because the staff are potentially there all day, and, you know, consuming a spot that is a high demand spot, uh, potentially, so, they, they found a way to accommodate their staff as offsite parking, and, you know, I, again, as you're looking for parking relief here, I just feel like, um, you know, a lot of the same logic is being used here of like, hey, there's plenty of public parking, take a look, um, but, uh, you know, it, it is potentially an, an issue, uh, especially if you're increasing staff, I mean, you've got your existing conditions, but if you're increasing staff, um, trying to find a way to accommodate them, uh, at least their parking requirements is, uh, is key, I mean, what the, Cafe Nero was, I don't, did they end up putting the, the bike rack in the basement?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they put a bike rack in the basement, all right, to, to actually encourage employees to, to ride to work, um, you know, because, again, we, we do get quite a few complaints about parking availability in Concord Center, I mean, increasing numbers.
Where does staff currently park, or, or are they encouraged to park?
Um, they park in this Stowe Street lot as well as, there's some public parking in Emerson Annex, the parking lot, you know, a little bit further down, and then also the side streets, and parking's been very limited of all the constructions going on.
Yeah.
At the Umbrella, so, it's variety of places, but I'd say the municipal lot and that additional block that's shared between the annex and public parking.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's, that's a concern that.
And then one minor point, the staff report, you recommended the second bike rack on this, on the new entrance, and I would say, condition.
Very, very supportive of that.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just wanna be, you know, consistent in our application of parking.
The strategy to park in the Emerson Annex is a good one, it's a little bit further for staff.
Yeah.
But it is a relief from taking those spaces.
It's not as high a demand area, yeah, is, is right around the library itself, I mean, there are certainly plenty of times a day where there are plenty of parking right there, but then there are other times where it's tighter, and you're not in the dead center of Concord, you're a little off the edge, but I've also heard conflicts that way with, you know, some of the other uses, okay. Um, should we open up for public comment perhaps? Okay, yeah, I'll take some questions from the public, please identify yourself and your address.
Good evening, I'm Sally Sanford, and I live 20 feet from this project at 25 Academy Lane.
Okay.
And the A.J.F. Smith Carriage House, which is right along the, um, west edge, right here.
Yeah.
Because I'm in a non-conforming structure, I'm only five feet from the lot line, so I'm very, very close to this project, and I have, I start off with an apology, I didn't think that this was gonna actually come before you tonight because of the lack of having finished the HDC process, so I have a letter for you, and I didn't get it to you last week.
Okay.
Um, so I apologize for, here, this is, and there's a little sort of sketch and attachment, and I'm just not gonna read the whole letter or anything, I'm just gonna try to give you some of the high points, and also address a couple of other things that have gotten said this evening so far. And since we just sort of finished on parking, um, we'll, I'll start, I'll begin with my parking comments, the parking study that was done, um, was done in the wintertime, which is not representative of the normal parking demand of Concord, but even so, it shows that the Sto, Stowe Street lot was full on January 18th, 2018, between the hours of 10:00 AM and 4:30 PM. And so, neither the parking study or the town planner, her comments, points out that the library is planning to increase its daytime attendance, it got alluded to a little bit, you were thinking more nighttime, but they're also really planning a lot more daytime activities that could, and special events that could accommodate up to 150 people in their new forum space. Sto, the Stowe Street lot has only 41 unregulated spots, so, no amount of scheduling cooperation between the Umbrella and the library is gonna create enough space to handle this increased parking demand, so if you do endorse giving the library parking relief, just do so knowing that you're not giving relief to those of us in the surrounding neighborhoods, we're already dealing with, uh, commuter traffic, since there's only three hour parking on Little Street now, Academy Lane is parked up, um, so, just, I'm not saying don't give that relief, but just do so, being fully aware that, that you, we have an increased problem, this isn't gonna solve the problem, it's not the library's job to solve that problem, but it's gonna be an increased problem, and it will not be giving relief to the neighborhood. I have a lot of concerns, and one of the reasons I think that Mr. Flint was struggling with, um, trying to calculate what the square footage was, is that, um, that nothing in the plans have really, um, showed you just how much of the house is going to be demolished, and it's pretty close to, if not even more than 50% of the house being taken down, and that may not trigger the demolition delay, but it's a substantial amount of demolition, and that's why they put a lot of massing to this project, because so much of the house is, is, is getting, is getting demolished, um, and the new prop, this, all of this new structure is really obscuring the, the rear portion of the house that's left. Um, the town planner, um, has suggested that, uh, the library provides some additional information to you regarding sustainability, and, um, I, we all recently received a flyer with our light bill talking about the benefits of geothermal, and the library really should be at the forefront of sustainability in this project, and I would really encourage them to take another look at how they are being sustainable here. All this demolishing is not a particularly sustainable thing, and there's existing structures that could get reused as well. I have a suggestion to make about the handicapped parking, and that's that you consider flipping the, the bump out drop off that's on the south side, and put that on the north side, and put the handicapped parking in the bump out on Sudbury Road. Main Street has a lot more traffic that comes down, and if you're a handicapped person and you've gotta open your door out of that driver's side and get crutches out, or get a walker out, um, you've got a lot of more traffic coming at you than you would on Sudbury Road, in that little block of Sudbury Road, comparatively speaking. The, the library, I don't think, has really walked the walk that they're asking their mobility impaired people to, to undertake. Here, you've gotta come in here and then go around this ramp, and at the last page of my letter, there's a diagram with, you know, red showing what the library's plan is for a mobility impaired person, and then I'm offering my alternative plan in green, coming in from Sudbury Road and using the existing handicapped ramp, so you've already got less structure that you have to build because we're in the 88 compliant ramp. It would reduce the amount that a person has to walk from approximately 275 feet, from approximately 250 feet to 175 feet, 30% reduction in how much a mobility impaired person would have to walk. So, I think if you really wanna try to make it easier for disabled people to access this library, far easier way would be to use your existing entrance, and that also solves some of the confusion that Mr. Johnson was referring to about how do you let people know really where they're supposed to come into this library? The, the principal entrance to the library really is on Sudbury Road, and this keeps that principal entrance there, um, and I, I, I think there are just a lot of benefits to mobility impaired people, but I think there are also some potential design benefits in, in rethinking how you bring people in, and let you then not necessarily have to have such a large ramp space, and here, uh, you could handle that with a platform lift, you could shrink the link, uh, and, and shrink some of this massing. Um, not in my letter are some comments about the landscaping plan that they've submitted and discussed with you, that still perpetuates an error that I pointed out in March to the HDC, and they're showing trees planted right where my fence is, and so you've got a slightly false impression of really what this is gonna look like, and that's still not been, um, corrected. Um, I think, Mr. Johnson, that you were correct from your chairman's breakfast, and your sense that there is still some feedback to be incorporated from the HDC, I've made some extensive correspondence and presentations to the HDC that's up on the website, and I encourage you to look at that information as you go through your review process, I do not think that this is at a point where it will be rubber stamped, and I think it's a mischaracterization to give you that sense that everything is hunky dory over on the HDC, and, um, they did not show the West facade to you because there's still quite a lot of jumble and the fenestration and the appearance of the West facade, there is, in my, in my presentation at the June meeting of the HDC, you will see the West facade and some proposals for how that could become more, um, historically appropriate. Um, I recently became a food service, certified food service manager, so I have just a brief comment about the coffee in the kitchen, we're talking about daily coffee, we're not talking about just special, special events food, and the BD Center tried daily coffee and abandoned it because staffing it and maintaining it to meet food service standards and whatnot became very difficult to keep the area clean, and they ultimately abandoned it, so, I really encourage the library to rethink this, partly because as, um, Ms. Hughes was saying, there are so many different sink requirements and stuff, once you start getting into all this, um, that, uh, it's, it's really a can of worms, that, why not just BYO, that there are nine coffee places within five minutes walk, um, where people can get coffee and bring in, and just let people bring in, plug in, whatnot, but don't get it, get out of the coffee service business, that's just from, as a newly invented food service manager. Thank you very much for your time and for reading my letter, and I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Paul, question on that?
Uh, sure, I just wanna make sure we get through.
Yeah, I, I'm really intrigued by your point on the, on the handicapped parking, is there a specific reason why you want handicapped on, on Main and the, and the existing 15-minute drop off on Sudbury? Have you considered something?
Something we would certainly look at, there are a number of functions that currently take place on the Sudbury Road pullout, one of the most important activities is the book pickup, so books are transferred through the man and network between libraries, and they're, they're brought right up into the office area at Sudbury Road entrance, placed on carts and sorted every day, so it would be a little bit more challenging to do that from the other side. I also watch it as a real convenience spot for folks who are just going into the library to return books, or pick something up quickly, you're allowed to go and spend five minutes, there's also an after-hours book drop, I pass by there multiple times every day, and frequently see people there early in the evening. Now, maybe we could change some of those functions and look at it as an alternative, but, um, there, there's a lot of benefit other than accessibility on the current Sudbury Road side, but it's something we'll consider.
Yeah, I was thinking in particular, I, I think about when those vans come up and they have the ramp that comes out the side, there's a lot more bicycle traffic on, on Main Street, I would think, than on Sudbury Road, and I know we've heard previously from cyclists who, who were upset about when they, the curbs were, were bumped out for, for crosswalks, and people were hitting, hitting them on their bicycles, um, that, um, it seems like that use, the handicap use, it'd be more likely to be extending out into the bicycle corridor than it would be on Sudbury, just, it's just a thought, I think it's a great point.
Okay, uh, can you take another comment?
Yes, Ed Dari, um, I live at 29 Academy Lane, next to Sally, and also the house at 54 Sudbury Road directly opposite the rear elevation here.
Okay.
Um, and I am highly concerned about, um, not only the aesthetic, in terms of the modern addition being placed in such a historic area, all of the elevations are modern, I think people can comment carried by a modern entrance, um, and that's how it's perceived, um, and frankly, if they put any more platform on it, it's gonna look very similar to the recent addition, having sort of the post, platform infill, it's, it's basically vertical, platform infill, and, and plate glass at the entrance, I know that this is not the form for that necessarily, but it's highly concerning, highly disturbing to me personally that, um, a significant modern addition is gonna drop down to such a historic area. Um, some more particular issues, um, I think the ceiling chair for the architect might have mentioned that there's some lighting in the back, in the rear, um, it's been represented at the HDC that there is no lighting in the rear, I'd just like to get that clarified, um, no lighting outside lighting fixtures.
I thought they were bollards, was what I heard.
So, uh.
Sorry.
So, go ahead and finish your concerns, and then direct it to the board, and the board will reply.
That's mine, because it has been represented at the HDC, is that there was no lighting fixtures at the backside of the property, the rear of the property. Um, as far as the shades go, um, today, um, I know both Sally and Sandy and ourselves have expressed concern for over a year now, that there are two punched windows in the library that are, that have pendo blinds on them, I think one of them is in the stacks, and one is adjacent to the stacks, and they, they cause a fairly considerable amount of light pollution when it's dark down, um, obviously the lighting in the library is similar than their average home, so it's a fair amount, and it's, it, it casts a fair amount of light pollution, um, we've addressed, or we brought this up at the HDC, particularly along the rear elevation, that is nothing but a modern, uh, elevation with primarily glass, dusk is later than sunset, so that's a concern right there, that whatever final rendition the addition takes, uh, I would think sunset would be the absolute latest, those, those shades would want to be down, and certainly if it's 3:30 or 4 o'clock in the afternoon on a winter's day with snow on the ground, with the light coming out of that with the requirements of lighting for the library, the entire side of that neighborhood is greatly affected. Um, and to date, the library has been consistent, has been stubborn, and has not moved off that position whatsoever, of a, of a glass wall abutting a backside neighborhood, so that, that is a concern, uh, that we have, um, and again, Sally's correct, the landscaping plan was both on her side and on the side of the faces, Sudbury Street, the, the trees are almost shown directly on the fence line, uh, some of the added trees, which just obviously can't happen, it's, you push in the library, and they don't be added, um, but the trunks can't go on the property, I think that's just, um, and then just to ask the board a question, is the planning toward the governing authority for the conditions that will be proposed? By that I mean, the, the shades and the timing of the shades, the upkeep of the landscaping, et cetera, et cetera, does that come from the different boards as they review those conditions, and the? And the conditions will come from a number of different permits along the way. Thank you.
So just to that last point, we make a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. We will recommend a number of conditions that, you know, there's all these other committees that we're gathering all of these up as they go along. They will eventually be part of the special permit that would be granted by the ZBA.
Thank you.
So, any other comments from the public? Okay, perhaps any responses from the applicant to any of the public comments that you heard?
I could respond to some of Ed's comments. Ed and Sally and Sandy have made comments about two existing windows on the second floor on the west side of the library that have been in place for 29 years or something in there, in the evening from their properties, even though it's quite a ways away, it does shine out. Those shades were installed today, and I apologize if it took so long to do that. The only problem is, we wanted them to be on automatic timers so that it didn't become a person's responsibility to lower them each day. And the Wi-Fi isn't good enough for the library right now, so we're working to address that so that they're on automatic timers, but those were just completed. It also makes, I think, a good clarifying point between sunset and dusk. And I'm not a technical expert on the definition, but it sounds like sunset is a more practical time, that the automatic lights, the automatic shades would go down, and they'll be on a light sensor outside that will trigger them, so they'll automatically change through the seasons of the year, and we'll confirm that in the HDC submittal. The library has agreed not to have nighttime programming in the children's garden in the south side of the property. However, the building code requires lighting at the egress of all doors. It's a code requirement. These are night sky compliant lights that have been reviewed. So I may have misstated previously that there's no light, but the code does require lights at all egress, mirrors and egress doors. It could be interpreted, if you look at the landscaping plan, which by the way, you have, you're looking at it right now, it may look as if the evergreen trees that are planted, that have been added to the landscaping plan to offer a buffer for the adjacent neighbors. It may appear that they're on the lot line or planted on the fence, but that's a graphic representation. They're actually intended to be just inside of the fence so that they will provide evergreen. Ed has a really good example on the separation between his property and Sally and Sandy's property, where many years ago, they planted very small evergreens, and those have grown up to be a wonderful buffer, but they do need to be outside the fence. Some of those we're looking at are existing trees, by the way, the white pines that are right on the lot line, those exist today. Lastly, we did actually change the landscaping plan adjacent to these two parcels. Some of you may be aware of the seed garden program, the seed library, lending library follow? So we previously had a seed garden to enhance that and support the seed lending program, but we've removed that recently to allow for more buffer planting between the properties, and I think that's an improvement. Thank you.
Can I just ask, since you installed those shades today, are they the same type of shade as what you're proposing for the glass walls in terms of they block 93%? Are they full blackout?
Yeah, they just don't go down automatically today until we get it approved.
But that would be useful for the public if they wanted to understand what these are going to be like. Although, I don't know if many people would be able to get into the right orientation relative to them without trespassing. So, okay. So then, you guys will be coming back to us after you meet with the HDC, after we get the engineer's report. I'm trying to think what else we're looking for, we're needing. Those are the main two things. So...
Do you think they could bring you their transportation consultant if they come back?
Bring the transportation consultant to talk about, what, parking?
Van Ass. To talk about what aspect of the parking?
One of those adequate parking. Is that not, I thought they mentioned that he's on vacation. That's why he's not here.
No, well, there was the landscape architect who was on vacation.
Oh, my bad.
Yeah, sorry, the landscape architect's on vacation, and I'm not sure, we could certainly reach out to Van Ass.
No, well, I want to direct that to your math, sorry. Maybe it's not warranted.
Well, it's just, I think the main open issue for me relative to the parking, my main still remaining concern is just accommodation of additional staff, just in terms of providing the same sorts of parameters for relief as we have used in this area in the past. Again, I don't know what options are available. People get creative, just looking for some creativity there, that's what I'd like to see personally. So, and then I think that Elizabeth wondered whether we wanted to give some guidance in terms of what, how we feel about this application now, so that she could begin to draft a report so that we could come to a decision next time. So any feedback on the application as you see it now that we've gotten the full view of it?
Well, certainly, I'd want to see the final feedback from the HDC before making a recommendation. But I don't think there's a lot of large issues here in the report. I mean, I mentioned before, I'd want to see the condition being bike rack. I would be curious on exploring the idea of changing the handicap with the 15-minute drop-off.
Yeah, I think that sounds really interesting to explore.
I don't know if that's, it's not a condition per se. I think that's what would be in the final plan or not. I don't know, maybe you can provide some input on that.
So I think the only input may be, you know, the town does have a disabilities commission to get, you know, their input on that. I do agree with your comment about, it's not just handicap, but also, you know, your comment about bicycling.
Well, it's just breaking out Main Street.
Whether there's more bicycling on Main Street or, you know, Sudbury Road, I think, I think both equally, you know, are heavily biked, but, you know, there is definitely more traffic on Main Street than there is on Sudbury Road.
Well, in fact, it can be backed up there.
Well, the other, you know, the other existing physical constraint on Main Street, you know, there's parking on both sides of the street, so visually for a driver, it feels much narrower and not having room to move over or, I'm going to say, drift to the center. On Sudbury Road, there is no parking on the opposite side of the street, so it does provide a little bit better sense of mobility. So I think, you know, I don't know the timing, you know, if the applicant can get input from the disabilities commission, but I can at least reach out to the public works director and get a little bit more feedback, but I think, I think not only just the handicap accessibility side of things, but I do think your comment regarding just bicycling and volume-wise, that having it on the other side is something to think about.
Yeah.
I'll just offer a response also. Thank you, Elizabeth. I actually have a meeting, I've met with Gene Goldsware a number of times, and I have a meeting set up for the next week to review this issue, and I'll seek her advice. It may be a little tricky. It's a really interesting concept, so I appreciate Sally raising it, the pros and cons as I flow through it, and I think we need to work through that process. It'll be a little tricky for us right now because we've submitted this design to the HDC. However, I think their purview stops at the end of the street. I may be mistaken about that in a public way. So it may be, we wouldn't change anything on library property if we swapped the handicap to the side, but I think it deserves a thorough vetting of the pros and cons, so we'll commit to doing that and figure out how to navigate this submittal process.
And then, otherwise for me, it seems like, you know, in the actual site plan review portion of the memo, I think there's a number of small issues that we're waiting for information to come back to. And my view on the parking is, I'm inclined to not have a concern with it, but in, you know, in the larger, we've got Nero Emerson and this that are coming online within 18 months of each other, roughly.
Right.
Right? And so we had parking studies done that we looked at very closely with Emerson, with Nero. There's been some foundational changes in this area.
Right.
I was actually going to ask, does anybody recall that when Nero opened, when was that? Was that?
A year ago.
A year ago, so this was done, and your parking was done in spring, in January and March? Yeah.
So the only thing I can add, you know, on the parking side of it, is that there are spaces behind Emerson's umbrella when the parking study was done that were not available. Additionally, you know, the town is going to reconstruct the stove parking lot and will be adding additional spaces. I can't remember off the top of my head how many that is. I want to say there's 41 now. I think it's going to like 60. I think they're adding, you know, like 20 additional spaces to the lot as well.
Okay.
So those are two factors that, you know, that come into play.
Yeah, I guess I would be in favor of recommending approval on the request for relief on parking. I'm just more waving a flag that I think it's going to get tighter in the future.
Well, yeah, well, and then I think also, we just need to have consistent standards. That's my concern. I mean, this is not going to be the last relief for parking application we're going to get, I suspect, in this area.
So I think this is something that, you know, as each of these applications comes forward, you know, the board started in 2016 with these.
Criteria.
Criteria, and...
They're helping.
You have a meeting coming up with the Board of Appeals to talk about potential zoning bylaw amendments, and this is one of them. But right now, under the zoning bylaw, I think the criteria established since 2016 have definitely gone, you know, a long way to providing that consistency.
Well, yeah, but I'm just saying, in this case, you know, the part that seems missing to me is just the provisions for additional staff. That just seems to be the one part, and that's why I keep harping on that. But, you know, when I look at our criteria, how we're dealing with stuff, that's a gap. Okay, so I think that's where we stand right now. I don't know, I mean, I think you've gotten all the feedback, right? So we're going to be looking at the construction sequencing plan coming in, the engineering department response.
That was the construction sequencing plan. That's a condition of approval?
Right.
That's not something that would be done now and presented to the board.
Okay, because it's been presented to us before. The, you know, the umbrella presented theirs, and the Concord Academy presented theirs to us, both of them.
Not in any detail...
Because that's where we learned about the temporary parking lot, how they were accommodating all of the construction staff. I mean, because this is a sensitive area for, during construction.
So for Concord Academy, they had to, they had to provide you that, it wasn't their construction sequencing plan, that's much more detailed and different. They had to show you the temporary parking lot because they actually needed a permit for that. They also had to show you that because they were utilizing the existing tenant courts for trailers that had to be permitted, so it was a little different. The construction sequencing plan will not be done until the actual contractor is on board, the site supervisor is there, they go through, they have their sequencing of when materials get delivered, when certain things get set up, when certain things get established.
But then the umbrella also told us about how they were going to reconfigure their parking and placement of trailers and so forth during the construction period. And, I mean, we haven't gotten any kind of information like that here. So that's, I don't know, we're not getting as much information, I would just say, versus these other adjacent projects. If it's not the construction sequencing plan, it's some information about how, you know, the neighborhood is going to get impacted during the construction process and what accommodations are going to be made to prevent further negative impacts. That's all.
Can we ask them if they have that?
I mean, do you have such a scheme?
Where are you in conceptualizing how you will do that?
Well, we have preliminary concepts on that. And we'll see if we can develop them to give you a better understanding.
Okay, and yeah, maybe I'm asking for the wrong thing as far as the construction sequencing plan, but some information about how, during the construction process, you're going to mitigate impacts, that's what I was looking at. Okay, so I think those are the things that you've heard now. We're okay? So then I'll continue this until our next meeting, which is first week of August, I believe it is, August 6th. So we'll continue at that time.
What would you like me to do? If anything.
I mean, it seemed like there is enough balls in the air that we can't really write anything up quite yet. I mean, what do you think?
It's your direction. I mean, I...
It just seemed like there were still quite a few things. Again, I don't know what's going to happen at the HDC, but... When are you going in front of the ZBA? Or do you know?
August 8th.
Real soon now.
Well, when they will open the public hearing.
Okay, yeah, you're not going to make a decision on the first night, so I think we're okay if we, if we do our decision, you know, our recommendation next time based upon additional information, and then we do our approval at the next meeting, right? Because that's how we'd have to do it. You'd have to write it up, yeah. Is that, I don't think that's going to get in your way. You'll have our verbal recommendation going into the ZBA.
Thank you. I think we have a fairly succinct list, and the deliverables are pretty straightforward. We'll get those back to you as soon as possible.
Yeah.
And ideally, if those need your approval, then it would be an approvable budget.
Yeah, okay. That's what I feel, yeah. No, it's not like that there's things just wide open. It's really more nailing down some details, yeah.
That's helpful, thank you.
Okay, then I think we're done with that agenda item, and we'll move on to the rest of the business. If you're going to leave at this point, please move all the way outside the building if you're going to have conversations, because we may not close that door, and it does get confusing. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Why don't we do a couple of quickies here of the minutes? How about that?
Minutes.
So I have to say, I went through the July 9th meeting minutes, and I did pick up one thing that I wanted to be added, and I've heard...
June 25th?
Okay, sure. June 25th, and it's, any comments from anybody? Oh, that would be easy then.
No comments?
Okay, so then I will entertain a motion.
Make a mo, well, okay, we'll do these separately. Make a motion that we approve the minutes of June 25th, 2019, as drafted.
All, any second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, and then July 9th minutes? Okay, and then July 9th minutes? So what I found on page three of that was under the planning board goals, if you may recall, Elizabeth had mentioned that we got the grant for the transit-oriented development at Throw Depot, and as a consequence, we added that as a high priority goal to the list. So I thought that was worth mentioning in our minutes. So I suggested adding that as a second sentence there. Okay? Everything else I thought was just fine.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes as amended upon the minutes recommendation for July 9th, 2019.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. We have taken care of minutes.
We had some things.
Okay. So, back to our housing initiatives. We continue to march forward.
Before, can I just?
Yeah.
I, I just wanna congratulate and commend the planning board for getting the grant at Throw Depot. That's a big deal, and it's exciting.
Yeah, it is.
It's exciting.
And it means it's yet another thing piled on our plate. But, yeah, I think it, it creates a real balance of all the things that we're working on, so. So a couple of different things for, and I guess we should, again, as we did last time, start with old business and then work towards new business. So the old business was kind of homework on the Village PRD concept, and the sheet that, that one sheet that was distributed. It was not just redistributed tonight. So if the dog ate your homework, I can, we can bring it up online. But as you may recall, we got halfway through this discussion. We, we especially spent a lot of time with Alan on the different kinds of, you know, patterns of development that could preserve some open space and yet allow more density, though they were also architecturally quite distinct from what we have had historically in Concord. And then we talked about different ways to reduce the impact on the neighborhood by perhaps adjusting setbacks based upon the height of the building. But then we didn't get a chance to get into all these other pieces. So, you know, for example, bonus density. So we are, in the past, provided bonus density for, you know, providing affordable units or, you know, for conservation. So we could provide bonus density based upon, for example, a better energy rating index, right? So stretch code today says the energy rating index is 55. We could say, hey, if you wanna go to 40 or something like this, that you get another unit or something, another 10% or, you know. And I don't know what the formula would be, but, you know, cause it would need to be something that would be economically favorable, but that's a question. Is that how we want to incent this? Because I have the feeling, the only way we can do this is through incentives. We can't do it through requirements. Right? I mean, we get back to conflicting with the building code, right? You don't wanna create a condition of construction that's more, that, that conflicts with building code. That was what at least I've heard. Another thing is, you know, do we change the terms for affordable bonus? And then also, do we have a higher maximum density than we have had, right? Currently, we only have, you know, eight an acre in Residence C with all density bonuses applied, maximum, right? You could go up to 12 an acre. That's where you get to like more like a smart growth type of level with, if you have a two and three family unit.
Am I the only one that can't read that? That's better, thanks.
There we go, that looks good. Yeah, I can read that even without my glasses. So any comments on bonus density? As a concept, as an incentive? If you saw the history, there's been definite changes in how that formula's been applied and kind of some cautionary tales as far as like you can make things too draconian, and then no one builds anything.
So with the increasing the density, you're keeping the requirement for open space the same?
The 50%?
Yeah.
Well, so that's another cool question, you know, is that if for the Village PRDs, is that necessary? Or desirable? And again, Alan was trying to show, well, if you build up, you could potentially still keep the space, right? Versus out. So.
So I'm in favor of the bonus density.
So I was struck by reading through some of this, that a lot of this was in response to Concord Green.
Right.
And a lot of what we're talking about is kind of moving in that direction. Like, no garages, parking barns, stacked housing that's clustered together. These are all things that we're, you know, tentatively proposing, and it's just interesting to me that this was put in place to sort of stop that from continuing to happen.
Right.
Especially this, you know, discussion about, well, you know, keeping open space, do we need to keep that? Like, it begs the question, are we going against why this was put in place in the first place?
Right, well, so I think that one of the concerns with this was that there wasn't as much of an open space provision prior to this.
Right.
So I do think it's ironic that Concord Green is actually quite a popular development at this point. It's kind of hit a, a kind of a renaissance, if you will. And so there are aspects of it that are actually desirable, and there are others, I think, that you, that this is a good example of why you would wanna make some changes. And so, yeah, try to protect open space, and yet allowing a pattern of development that is more dense, and where, you know, people create a sense of community because of that density, that they're kind of, they bump into each other all the time, is not necessarily a bad thing.
I'm not opposed to it, it's just.
Yeah, it's just interesting. Well, and 40 something years has gone by, you know, so people's, yeah, priorities have changed.
Yes.
I think at the time, too, that like garden apartments were, you know, they were just exploding all over America. So I, I think that there was a sense of, like, that it was a threat. So.
Here's a question. What was in the space, does anybody know? Of Concord Green prior to Concord Green?
I don't think there was a lot. I don't think there was much there.
This was 1979?
Before.
Before that, so like mid, early, mid 70s?
Yeah.
Maybe, interesting, we can go back and look at the maps.
I was curious what happened in there. Cause I know that, like, there were some other developments, like in Lexington. Why don't you know? Like in Lexington, that somewhat similar developments, but they have formerly been like small partridge golf courses.
How many PRDs are in Concord?
How many PRDs are there in Concord?
Oh, I don't know off the top of my.
Couple dozen.
Which brings me to the other thing. Elizabeth, thank you for putting together those maps. Maybe we can look at, look at those.
Yeah, oh.
When did you send those out?
Yeah, I didn't see the final. I saw the draft.
Maps.
Maps.
The three maps you got?
I saw the draft, first three maps were those. Let's see.
When did you send those out, Elizabeth? Not that I am.
Maybe I didn't look at the. Cause we had had a discussion by email where, you know, the parcels had been identified by size, and you'd said you were gonna relook.
On Friday.
Okay, I didn't, okay, I didn't look at the.
So how about, how about 1970?
Oh, so it was just like a farm?
I, I, I don't know what's.
Whatever that is. And some stuff lined up outside.
Looks like a farm.
Yeah.
What does that, what does that say? P?
Pond.
Pond.
Pond UC, 4C? Under construction.
I don't, I don't know what it was, but.
Oh, well, they put in ponds, right? They, those are man-made ponds that they created.
Yeah.
So there was definitely, this was a stream or a drain, it could have been a drainage, a drainage ditch to a pond, to a drainage ditch, to the wetland over here, and then these were, they'd superimposed the buildings that went over it.
Cool.
I think they still have the same stuff in there, 277 Baker Avenue. What's that? Oh, it's a building right over Tri-City. It's always got boats and stuff.
I think you're right.
Yeah, so we were looking for those maps, is that what we're?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would love some help interpreting those.
Do you want to start with West Concord?
Yeah.
Oh, so these are the walking distance maps?
Yeah.
But there was.
But there was the other.
I think it's the parcel size, yeah.
Yeah, there you go. So.
So the yellow is the outline of the Residence C Zone District. Any property that is, has hash marks is town-owned, whether that's municipal, open space, recreation, conservation, doesn't matter, it's just, it's held by the town in some manner. So right out playground, this is natural resources, this is the school, this is natural resources, and then the color coding says, you know, you know, what the square footage is.
Right, so anything that's green or above could be a PRD in theory. I mean, maybe not in practice, based upon some other criteria, but.
Well, so like, this is the church, that'll, that'll never happen.
Right.
I mean, there's, there's definitely some, you know, some in here. These over here, you know, there's, you know, the wetland extends, you know, up further than where the edge of the property is. But others, these over here.
Right. What's with that yellow one? Yeah, that, shouldn't that also be marked?
This one?
Yeah, that's gotta be at least 30,000 square feet.
That's my, that's where I left.
That's Riverwalk.
Oh, okay, so that already is, it's already a PRD. Okay. So there are quite a few parcels, actually.
Well, I don't know, you've got.
Not really. This is all floodplain. This one right here, this is the Asa Bed.
Oh, yeah, that's no way that could be developed, great.
That's all, that's all floodplain. This one, this one right here?
There's a proposal for that one, right?
Yes, on that one, definitely. This one you're already looking at?
Yeah.
Um, this is Wedgewood Common over here.
Right. But which could be redeveloped someday, potentially.
And.
I guess so. This one right here.
That's apartments.
Well, I also, there's one over a little bit further. Right here, the Rapoli Land.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which would be another one, but that's not within walking distance to the train station.
Okay, so there really isn't much.
I would say there's one. Really?
Uh, sorry, which one is?
This one right here.
Yeah.
Oh.
And that one's already in some form of process, is that?
No, it's still on line port.
Okay.
And then those right on Route 2, that, that doesn't make any.
This one, I, 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 this is, I think this is state-owned. This little purple one down here. That's the church. This is a small one.
Well, is that the one that they're gonna do the two-family with the Habitat for Humanity?
That's down here.
Oh, okay, that, right there, next to it.
Okay.
All right, so we're saying one.
This one, I'm not, I'm not sure about this one.
I know who that is.
That's wetlands.
It's primarily wetlands.
Yeah.
It's my next one. It's wetlands and blueberry bushes.
What ones?
I've been to the house to apple berry, it's there, yeah.
So thi, this is the parcel that you had lit up there. This one, and it's essentially wetlands from here to here. This one, there's another one that's lit up that there's currently a proposal under, it's under agreement.
Right, and then the one right against the river, right?
Which one against?
Oh, that's Westphal, sorry, Westphal, yeah, it's already developed.
I'm just not finding.
FEMA flood?
I mean, I guess you could look at.
Floodplain Conservancy.
Wetlands Conservancy District. Floodplain Conservancy District, it goes all the way up to here. So, I mean, whether there's some potential up in this area, also if they combined with these two lots.
Are you saying it's under contract or something? Yeah.
Okay.
So, which one that was?
It's this, this, and this.
Oh, okay, okay.
So whether these could be combined to do something, that's this one right here.
Yeah. Okay.
So that's what's happening over here, or will be happening over here.
Right. Okay, so talking about potentially three PRD areas.
And a fourth one's over there. Under the existing, under the existing threshold?
Right, the 40,000 threshold.
But the other one outside of that is outside of the half-mile radius, so it wouldn't be a Village PRD.
Right, well, in fact, even if you're gonna do literally half-mile versus Residence C, I suspect that even Riverwalk is right at the limit.
Well, right, right here's three quarters.
Oh, there it is, okay. Yeah, so the Riverwalk 2 would be beyond the three-quarter.
Was this exercise primarily to think about whether we're gonna change the threshold level on PRDs for the size? Or are we looking at it just more generally to think, like, what are these sites like in, in terms of all the other?
So there are two objectives here. Yeah, one was whether to do the threshold size minimum PRD, and I think that, well, this, we've only looked at West Concord, but, you know, it seems like it's a pretty good threshold as standards, as it stands. The second is that what is the limit of, of the half-mile versus three-quarter mile? And what would, you know, do we set one of those two as an overlay? Or do we instead just go with Residence C?
Okay, thanks.
Well, also, just more broadly, is it worth doing all of this if it's going to result in affecting one?
Well, that's where the combination of the two comes in, exactly. And so, all right, so should we look at the others?
I think the one, I think it's the depot that had the most.
The depot had the most?
I mean.
Wow, look at all those back on the backside of Pilgrim, but, and that's Residence C, huh?
Yes, but I will.
But those have all been recently built out as big houses.
And I'll, but I'll do, I'll do the, I'll do the exercise.
No, but also.
It's significant.
They have been just built out, yeah.
They've all been built out. They're not, they're not gonna swap that to a PRD anytime in the next 20 years.
So over, almost over half
Yeah.
of those lots are in the floodplain. So I'll toggle back and forth.
Yeah.
So that's these.
Okay.
The ones I would note, would, so like even.
Even that? Even that one is massively flooded.
And then this one is already developed.
Has an apartment complex.
Correct, I don't know how it was developed.
But that could be redeveloped, that, it, it is actually kinda.
I don't know how it would be redeveloped denser than this, 'cause I, I can't remember how many units are in each of these. I know they're not single-family dwellings.
Definitely not.
I wanna say there might be like four units in each of these.
They're probably four complexes, yeah.
Yeah, well, each one has at least four parking spaces in front of it, so.
Okay.
Can you toggle back to the other map?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, thanks. So it's the armory at the corner over.
So I'm a little confused, the stuff that's, that's, like, this area, is this just not Residence C?
Correct.
Right.
So this is.
It's all alongside Berry Road, it's in Historic District, Hubbardville. Beyond there, on the other side.
So this is all the Thero Depot Zone District is in here?
Mm-hmm.
And then it goes to Residence B out there. Or is it even Residence A? I think it's Residence B.
So it's Thero Depot, this is Residence B.
Yeah.
So in this, so here we're talking about.
So there's a significant amount of Residence B that's within a half-mile of, and even three, you know, half and three-quarters of a mile, this, this area back in there. Again, I doubt that, you know, Subbury Road itself is much of a target for PRD development, but then there's this street, what's it called back there?
This one down here?
No, I was thinking, isn't there something back, no, I guess there's farmland there. Yeah, okay, there's nothing else back there, the Wheeler Land. Yeah, but that's under conservation, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So can we, looking at this map, is there anything that's a reasonable candidate for?
I don't know what this one is.
Those are apartments.
These are already?
That's the, yeah, those are the Thero Court apartments.
Well, it's on this side.
My mother-in-law lives there, no, on the other side.
On this side.
Yeah, you know, you, there's, there's Starbucks, and then there's, you turn, you go past, and there's the little sign that says, you know, don't turn in our driveway.
What's the orange next, what's, uh, one nineteen, one twenty-one?
One nineteen.
Oh, and it's that Berry Road, the orange one adjacent to the right, yeah.
That's this one right here. I think that's just a house.
Yeah.
Also, yeah.
Uh, well, but it's a two-family.
Uh, I think, mm, okay, I'm sorry.
But, and it's in the Historic District.
Okay.
There are lots of constraints in this, it's just lots.
That, that's why I was saying, you know, if you go out to the mile, to the mile market, it doesn't open up that much more, but at least it.
Well, I think, my attitude is starting to change on this, where I'm feeling like that while we've spent a lot of attention on recent PRDs that would, you know, be in this district, they may be the last couple that ever could be. And so are we spending a lot of time developing a bylaw for something that can't get built? I mean, 'cause there aren't any parcels left.
You could have one here.
That house? That would be, it would, that'd be, the demolition delay bylaw would be invoked in a millisecond, right?
So it's a demolition delay bylaw?
Yeah, I know. But it's also a Historic District.
Yeah.
The HTC would have to approve anything that happened there, right?
To, correct, so likely.
Anything.
The house may not be demolished.
Right.
Uh, it doesn't mean that they can't build something else.
Back in there.
In this one point five plus acre property out in the middle of town.
People would go.
Well, yeah, but it's, property rights are strong, you know? So, well, that's a very interesting one.
To.
To write a bylaw?
To write a bylaw.
Yeah.
For one property that has.
Well, I think it's called something else, but, um, so.
And it would still have to come through here anyway.
Well, I mean, what, do we have to do this now? I mean, can you go through these properties and tell us what's developable under the current threshold?
No, I, I don't have enough time in the day to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
But, no, because there's just, there's so many, I don't, I don't, you know, are we talking about?
There are lots.
One-story, two-story?
Yeah.
Um, three stories that go thirty-five feet, I don't.
No, 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 I'm just talking, no, no, sorry, I'm just talking about which lots are potentially would come before us as PRDs, oh, is.
But that, that's.
So so far, within the areas.
That's what this is giving us.
We've found two.
I know, but.
Well, one's, it's in the land court, and one is, yeah. Within the half-mile restriction, I think we can safely say hundred percent not worth doing.
Well, let's, let's just keep going, we haven't done Concord Center yet, there's one more map.
Hold on. Sorry, hold, what, what about the other ones?
This one is.
That's a house on Subbury Road.
What about those green ones that were on Walden?
So that, you're only talking, that's, you know, thirty-six.
It's below the threshold.
So.
The blues are below the current threshold.
Yeah, so this is only, you know, this is like thirty-six hundred square feet.
Yeah, I haven't seen any reason to wanna reduce the threshold yet.
What's the green up on Walden? Those are those big long, that big long parcel that's next to the, um, that conservation little area on the corner.
Oh, that's not the one I want.
Someone doesn't wanna render.
And what's the walking net?
Is it the?
There you go.
There we go.
Is it the judgment of Elizabeth, the, the folks on the planning board, that PRDs are a really useful tool in meeting the objectives of both increasing diversity and affordability while maintaining the sustainability goals? Like, when you, when, when you think about the other PRDs that have been developed, where did they increase diversity and affordability in the way that we now wanna see?
Well, the track record has been very mixed, and that's why, I mean, there've been benefits, but there've also been challenges, and I think that that's why we've been wanting to take another look at it. And I think that we, we split it into these two areas of interest. One is in-town ones, because we weren't seeing stuff that was creating a walkable type of standard of development, right? That was one thing that we were wanting to do, we say, hey, if you're in town, let's get an in-town lifestyle around this stuff. And then outside, we were saying, well, we would like to see more sensitive preservation of open space. You know, because, again, the, the town's goals out there are to, you know, to improve the visual consistency of the open space and natural resources, and so that's why this natural resource protection zoning uh, is a, is an idea. So, yeah, PRDs, I think, have helped versus a subdivision, let's just take Commerford Road as an example. That, you know, a subdivision plan out there would have just mowed down a lot of beautiful, um, what's now conservation land. And so instead, we've got, you know, a condo complex that's up in one corner, and trails, and woods, nice woods, so. I think that there were a lot of comments on the design of the condo complex, but meanwhile, there was open space conservation. So, I think that's why we're not tossing out the PRD bylaw altogether, but we're trying to improve it. And one of the first steps was to say, well, okay, if we're gonna improve it, are we gonna create a special village PRD for in-town? And here's the third of three maps to try to decide whether that makes sense. So far, we, we would be doing it for two properties, so. Well, what's, what's here though?
So I can tell you, um, this is the church.
Okay, that's not gonna be a PRD.
Um, I can.
Well. Churches become other things, I mean, and now, I think that church is doing very well, but nonetheless, some churches surprisingly stop becoming churches, and they get converted to residential. All right, so.
I, I, I can tell you nothing along here.
Yeah.
This is all floodplain for the Millbrook.
Okay. How about that Bedford Court at the?
This one?
Yeah. Um. Looks landlocked.
It is landlocked, so I don't think there's.
What is it?
The potential for that.
There is a house there.
There's a house?
Yep, so it's this parcel, uh, right here.
How do they get there?
They, um, likely have some type of driveway easement.
Yeah, I think it's a share.
Huh.
And so they have a driveway easement that comes off. So this would not be possible for a PRD?
Right.
Um, it would not, it wouldn't, it doesn't have frontage, the requirement, you have to have frontage on an existing, um, roadway, so that does not have frontage.
Okay, unless they bought, combined a lot, yeah.
So, once again, you're in a very significant historic district.
The American Mile.
So I don't think you'd be buying and demolishing any of these homes, uh, as well.
Might be difficult, might be controversial, okay?
Well, you could do off Bedford Court, though, couldn't you, or no?
And then, well, that looks more problematic coming off of Bedford Court.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, oh, you mean they could buy, they could buy that lot, yeah. Okay, but still, those are all hypotheticals.
Uh, and I can tell you that, um, I even, Bedford Court is.
It's twenty feet wide street, I think.
I don't think, I think, I think the right-of-way might be.
What's adjacent to that? Is that Partridge? What, um?
This is Partridge Lane up here, this.
This one up here.
Yeah. And that's Residence B, that's not even Residence C.
So, um, yeah, I, I think the existing pavement is like fourteen feet wide.
All right, and so what others are there out there? Anything else?
Um, uh, this is the church parking lot.
Yeah. Okay. Bow Street. What is? Okay, and then, oh, Kaiser Road, that, okay, I know those properties, okay. Doesn't look like we have, there's not enough there.
Not really.
Okay, so, that's helpful, I think that's very helpful. Okay, well, then, I mean, there's still the question of the town-wide PRD, and whether we wanna tweak the town-wide PRD at all. And that's where, again, I was looking at the open space design or natural resource protection zoning, those readings that were distributed today. Again, I don't know if anybody had any time, I mean, imagine these things arrive, and you're at work, and you're like.
Yeah.
But just let me talk about, uh, a few of the concepts here. Um, so, one is that, uh, a lot of these, what they do is, um, they work with a conservation, like, trust or something, to identify the conservation, uh, values of the site. So is there a brook? Is there a hill, you know, things like this that, um, should be preserved? Okay, and then you identify the developable areas of the site versus those that should be maintained in their natural state as a, as a site inventory. And then what sometimes happens, and this was the article that I read, uh, that, um, that Elizabeth distributed today, was that the town can actually buy the site and then resell uh, just the developable part to a developer, and then maintain the rest as conservation. And it's actually very important that there be a kind of a bright line between the permitting group, which would be us, and the people that buy the site, which would probably be the select board. So, you know, 'cause you don't want a conflict of interest. Um, and apparently, Northampton has done this, like, multiple times, and as a result, has been able to create a lot of affordable housing, um, and preserve a lot of land. And so, uh, they, you know, of course, the person who wrote the article was the Northampton person running the program. So they're very gung-ho about it, but it sounded fantastic, um, on its face, as just what they've been able to do.
So when they, so the town buys it, and then the buy, the town sells it to a developer, uh, some portion of it?
Yeah.
And when, so have they, did they develop a program where they said, we want this kind of housing? Or did they just sell it to, I mean, were they able to, um, maintain that much control over it?
Um, they. I don't remember that, but they were able to get external funding for, in some cases. And the other amazing thing is they have first right of refusal options to buy, like, a hundred properties in North, Northampton that they've acquired for no dollars. So, that basically, over the years, this, this process has become so trusted that they actually have it set up for a lot of property in town.
So, I, I think this, this concept requires, um, far more education.
Yeah.
And, and a much broader discussion.
Well, and this is the most extreme example I've heard, I mean, there are lots of other towns that have done various things, including transferred development rights from other sites, lots of things, but this one was the most radical I've, I've heard, of course, Northampton, they're, they're known for that kind of thing, but.
Does the town have the capacity through the Housing Authority or to actually develop housing and then sell it to a private developer?
Well, and by the way, the article also discusses that in some communities, that would be considered to be, you know, problematic. Uh, that, you know, a public entity, you know, first of all, they're getting in the middle of the property market, so they're in some sense manipulating property values, you might say. Some developers would cry foul about, like, hey, the town's in here competing with me, and, you know, I'm trying to develop a property, and the town's gonna buy it up from under me, and then they're gonna dictate the terms of which I can.
No. So, so, I, to answer your question, the town does not have the capacity to purchase property and develop housing?
Not directly.
Not directly, and I'll give you one, um, there's lots of reasons, but the primary reason is that, um, it, it's not physically possible. The town is required, um, to pay prevailing wage for any, any construction project that the town does, um, and to pay prevailing wage to develop a housing project of any magnitude would, um, would not make it financially feasible.
Yeah, we, we could talk there, is, is the Housing Authority part of, is it a separate, like, entity than the town? They could build, like, affordable housing at different standards than?
Um, no, the, the, but the Concord Housing Authority, um, is, also has different statutes under, um, federal laws as far as, um, HUD and, um, the federal funds that they also get for being a housing authority. Um, when, when they do construct projects, they are constructing them at prevailing wage, I mean, they're, um, it's, it's more costly for a public entity to, to construct anything than it is a private entity.
Okay.
But. But, you know, the Housing Authority, I don't, they haven't built any new housing. I mean, they renovated Peter Bulkley, um, Everett Gardens, but, I mean, they haven't.
Right, it's the CHDC that's really taking on the building the new. The Concord Housing Development Corporation.
Corporation?
Which would likely be the entity that would be, you know. Which would likely be the entity that would be, you know, involved in something like this too.
We, I'm missing the planning board.
The planning board role, we'd be issuing special permits.
Yeah.
So there, that's the other dimension to this is, you know, you can create this, uh, open space design zoning such that it's by right, so that it would never even come in front of us, so we would just do it. Uh, but most of the time around here, there'd be a special permit process, and I think in Concord, we'd have a special permit process. So we would be granting, you know, we'd be doing a site plan review and granting a special permit, is what we'd be doing. So, um, and one of the other interesting things, and just to round out the discussion on this article, was that, um, to sweeten the deal, uh, what Northampton does is they waive some of the requirements for a subdivision if you do the things they want you to do. So for example, you could put a dead-end street in a subdivision as long as it deadends onto a conservation land. And so I, I don't know what our public safety people would say about that, but, you know, it's, it's just, um, and then they were saying that as a consequence, virtually any new development that requires a building of a road is following this open space design concept, or I think what they were calling was limited development?
Is it land conservation?
Land conservation development or something. Anyway, there are like six different names for these things, but they're all basically the same type of concept. Um, so what, I think the, the point of this discussion is getting a little late, and I don't want to run us too late, but, you know, we're going to meet with the select board next Monday. So I think that the major, so the majority of our discussion should be around the accessory dwelling unit and the two-family concept, but I think that we do need to at least raise the issue, where I think we've now come to another conclusion, which is, hey, we thought about doing an in-town PRD, we've decided there aren't enough sites to make that worthy. But then, and looking at the PRD, are there ways we can improve it by looking at open space design? And then, you know, note some of these concepts.
Yeah, um, on that, that last piece, I've noted some of the comments that stuck out in my mind from the 1880 Maine, or whatever.
1440?
1440?
Yeah.
Maine, were, were concerns about that the, the open space that was being preserved was, is wetland hard on the railroad's track that's cut up? Well, there's potentially a trail access, but, but that it's, it's land that...
It's what's left over.
It's, it's what's left over and is otherwise unbuildable.
And see, that's what's really attractive about this open space design approach.
Well, but you can, you can change the current PRD.
Exactly.
Regarding the open space, that it, you know, um, that 75% of it needs to be upland, um, none of, none, you know, um, it has to be, you know, all contiguous, so it can't be, here's a little chunk, you know, here's a little chunk, here's a little chunk. So I mean, there's different ways...
You can't wrap around the outside of the perimeter of a lot.
There's different ways to strengthen, you know, the, the language, but what you also have to understand is that, you know, the PRD, it's a special permit and it's discretionary.
We can say no, but if we do...
The board can say that, well, you know, the, the bylaw specifically says that the open space has to be of a size, shape, and of, you know, an area that, you know, provides an open space benefit to at least the residents of the PRD. And so, you know, the board can say, well, having a little chunk here and a little chunk there and a little chunk here doesn't meet that requirement.
Yeah.
Yeah, but what I'm looking for though are also the offsetting incentives that would still, while we could tighten up those aesthetic things, they would also offer some incentive to continually the PRD rather than saying, oh, tech with it, I'm going to do a subdivision. Because that, that's what we're up against, right? At every, at every juncture. So I think that that's why I was intrigued by like the dead-end street thing. Yeah, if we have a subdivision, we're not going to have a dead-end street. So, I mean, we've already been around that, uh, block recently, um, so, so to speak. And so, um, you know, if there are ways in which we can make things more attractive and yet get what we want out of it, um, I think that we should look at that. So I think we should look at both sides of it, tightening, but also incenting.
Yeah, and, and so in terms, and you said the same thing, I think, on the, the energy rate?
Yeah, energy, yeah.
And, and so what, what is the, what, what are you thinking in terms of incentive, incentives? I mean, there's, there's increased density.
Right. And it's interesting when you offer increased density but then require more open space, so you're really saying, pack them in.
That's right, well, that's right.
Yeah, well, and you know, pack them in, build them up.
We're talking about now, you know, what Alan was showing.
Yeah, well, and I think that's an interesting thing, I think we should look at that.
I absolutely do.
I absolutely do. Um, and, uh...
So the flip side of that though is that if you think about that, then you also need to think about changing that it has to be compatible with the neighborhood. Because nowhere are you going to get anybody who currently has, you know, a colonial or a Cape and you have a three-story complex next to them.
I don't know what that means compatible with the neighborhood.
Well, it's always subjective. It is, it is a subjective property.
Right, exactly, like I, I would say, like...
Even so.
True to the, an excellent example of a colonial was good with an excellent example of a modern structure rather than like a cruddy colonial, like a great, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, but it's, it's really more as...
But I would be in favor of losing the, I don't know.
Is there a room full of people with pitchforks and flaming torches?
No, you're right.
Then you could sort of say, it's not compatible. You know, that's, that's usually the criteria.
Man, I'm, I'm with you in wanting to keep thinking about PRDs and how, and whether they're, whether that we can't get more out of it. I mean, I know I'm, so I'm with you.
It may just be a tweak, you know, it may only literally be some sentences in this thing.
I think it's harder to think about getting there than it was with the accessory and the two-family, but I think we should keep doing it.
Okay.
But that's just me.
Okay, I think we have some, some resolutions here then. Um, and I, I think that will...
Oh, good.
No, well, first of all, there, no village PRD, right?
No, I got that one.
Okay, and then I think that on the...
Still looking at the existing PRD bylaw.
Existing PRD, and I think that the, the pieces that we want to look at are, first of all, uh, tightening up the open space requirements, uh, perhaps, uh, allowing bonus incentives for additional open space, um, and then perhaps a bonus incentive for, um, more energy efficiency. Those are the main ones, right? I think, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think the only thing, I know this has come up before, is, it's probably more tied to the aesthetics, is the garage issue so that we don't...
Yeah, well, do we limit the garages?
Linked garages and stuff like that.
Car barns, garages, quit, is there anything we can do? Has, I mean, I don't know what you could practically do, but I'd love to find a way to do it.
To, to...
Limit the number of garages somehow.
Or parking format.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, so currently the zoning bylaw requires two parking spaces per residential unit, so you can say in, in a PRD, a maximum of one and a half space per unit. And let them decide how they, you could, you could, you could say maximum.
I see.
More and more communities are looking at parking maximums, not parking minimums.
Yeah, well, maybe that's the way to go.
You can look at a parking maximum.
Those are the, the, those three things would be...
There would be a big improvement.
To make a pretty sizable difference in...
And a, a parking, a parking maximum.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I could see that being, I, I have a little bit of concern tying energy efficiency to a, a density bonus, um, because the density bonus directly affects the external aesthetics that the neighbors and the, you know, whether, some of the neighborhood. Energy is a goal that we have, but, but if you're tying, uh, let's say, you get, you get to go to, just hypothetically, 12 units per acre, but then you're restricted to a parking maximum of, of some number, then you're reducing the...
The visual surface.
You're reducing the visual bulk.
Yeah.
Like, those two things I think could maybe work pretty well together. And, and we've heard, we've heard from more than one developer, well, two-car garages are required. It's not economically feasible. Well, maybe it's economically feasible if you get to build two extra units.
Yeah, well, and I think that it will send people to build the kind of units that the, our housing production needs.
Yeah.
So...
You may get a bonus density for having, you know, less parking spaces.
Yeah.
And provide some alternative transportation, or the PRD joins, crosstown connect, and they provide a little, you know, shuttle stop or something.
But Burton, uh, back to the, the energy efficiency, I mean, I, I understand the concern, but I'm also wondering, how else could we incent it?
I'm thinking...
I, you could make a PRD get site plan approval.
Site plan approval, but...
Currently, site plan approval is not required for a PRD.
Okay, well, I think that would, that's a straightforward thing to add.
Either that or, or look to have, so it, it's very difficult to just, like you do with site plan criteria, add a sustainability criteria, because there's many different special permits that you, you never ever see, that the Board of Appeals sees.
Yeah.
You can't, you know, somebody who gets a special permit for an outdoor event, you know, they're not going to have a site plan criteria for sys, you know, sustainability. But for site plan approval, for, you know, if a PRD requires site plan approval, you already have the sustainability criteria.
Right, well, why don't we just add that?
I don't know, I don't know the history of why...
Why it doesn't?
It doesn't, and it could be, um, timing, I don't know when site plan was first adopted. If this was adopted in the early 70s, it, it may have just not been part of the bylaw and it never, nobody ever thought to include it.
Never thought to put it right or fit it, they'd always already been doing a few of them. Um, and you wanted to add also, Elizabeth, that discussion of whether the ZBA does an approval at all of a PRD, so...
So I think that's a, a topic of discussion with the Board of Appeals.
But shouldn't we bring it up with the select board as well when we meet with them? Or you mentioned, we've got now this laundry list of like five things that we're going to look at for the PRD. I think that we should add that as we're going to look at that. Okay, I mean, we don't have any final decisions yet on the PRD at all, but, uh, okay, I think that that, I'm a, I'm a little surprised where we ended up, but I think that was useful. Okay, uh, then I think that leads us to public comment, or actually, any liaison reports first. Anybody go to any meetings?
I did, I went to the CPC, but I did nothing, uh...
Nothing to report yet?
To report back that gets exciting in December.
May I, um, at some point, we, relating to hats, um, we were going to look into whether Lincoln was having a problem with their accessory, um, dwelling. Did we ever touch base with the Lincoln Town Planner?
No, I'll, I'll make myself another note, thanks.
Okay. All right, then, now we're ready for public comment. Any general public comment this evening?
Good job.
State your name and address.
One more thing for Nancy to type.
Okay, uh, thanks very much, and the meeting's adjourned.